Good evening, we'll call to order the, wow, September the ninth. Committee, the whole meeting, we'll kick it off with an obshy agenda. Do I hear a motion? Some second?
Second.
Any objections? All right, moved by Mr. Calhoun, seconded by Mr. Gabowski. Item three, special recognitions, Ms. Denny, good evening.
Charleston County School District recognized the arts in basic curriculum ABC schools as part of the Arts in Education Week, beginning today, September ninth, 2024. The Board of Trustees, there are currently sixty-seven schools in South Carolina that have obtained the ABC status, and the district is proud to have four of these distinguished schools in CCSE. Angel Oak Elementary School, Principal Judith Condon. Ashley River Creative Arts Elementary School, Principal Tim Sullivan. North Charleston Creative Arts Elementary School, Principal Latoya Smith. Sanders Clyde Creative Arts Elementary School, Principal Janet Malone. The ABC Institute is cooperatively directed by the South Carolina Arts Commission and the South Carolina Department of Education and the College of Visual and Performing Arts at Winthrop University. The prestigious Arts in Basic Curriculum designation affirms that these ABC schools ensure students in each school are immersed in an arts-rich educational opportunity as a core component of their curriculum. The leaders in these schools have shown deep commitment to integrating arts in education into every facet of the operations in their schools. So we thank you for showing our students an arts in basic curriculum school. Board of Trustees, if you'd like to gather for a photo, that would be lovely.
Everybody wants what they don't have.
At this time, I'd like to invite the members of the Student Support Services Team who are in the audience today to stand. This team is the front line of building supportive environments for our students. With that, today, I'd like to read a proclamation for Suicide Prevention Month. Whereas September is recognized as Suicide Prevention Month, a time dedicated to raising awareness about suicide and promoting mental health resources to present, prevent these tragedies. And whereas suicide remains a significant public health issue, and recent statistics highlight an urgent need for an increased awareness, intervention, and support, especially among our youth. And whereas, according to the South Carolina Department of Mental Health, South Carolina ranks twenty-sixth in the nation for teen suicides ages twelve through nineteen. Whereas mental health challenges are prevalent among our youth, and many of these young individuals are suffering in silence due to stigma, lack of access to resources, and inadequate support systems. Whereas it is crucial to foster open dialogue, provide educational resources, and promote mental health initiatives to address and reduce the incidence of youth suicide. And whereas, community organizations, educators, healthcare professionals, and families must work collaboratively to build supportive environments, offer intervention resources, and create safe spaces for young people to seek help. Whereas, by recognizing Suicide Prevention Month, we commit to promoting mental health awareness, supporting those affected by suicide, and advocating for programs and services that offer hope and help to individuals in crisis. Now therefore, Charleston County School District do hereby proclaim September as Suicide Prevention Month. We urge everyone to join in raising awareness, supporting mental health initiatives, and working together to present, prevent youth suicide. Together, we can make a difference and offer hope to those in need.
Thank you, Ms. Denny.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly. We want to thank the board for being here today and for spending several hours with us today in a board retreat focused on the recommendations from Cognia as we looked at board governance, first and foremost. Secondly, how we're working together as a district to decrease disproportionality rates and standardize our coaching training across the system. We also discussed at the retreat for the public's knowledge, Regulation forty-three one seventy in depth. And we also heard from Mr. Barrowey live in and attend numbers as they are expected to influence capital projects moving forward. So I want to thank the board for being present and being engaged with us. Also want to thank staff for the countless amount of time that went into preparation for the board retreat. As such, the superintendent's report tonight is very, very brief, and it begins with a highlight, Maggie, on slide two, of the back-to-school bash. I want to thank the board again for rescheduling its meeting in August so that our employees and staff could attend and celebrate the time together. So this is a short video for those of you who were not able to attend.
We're so excited to kick off the new year tonight with all of our staff to talk about the great things going on in Charleston County School District. This is our way of saying thank you to our employees and kicking off the year in grand style with Darius Rucker, fans across the district, and lots of other entertainment.
We are all educators, and we are just excited to be here and glad that they're doing something like this. We're back to school, and we're glad to be a part of it.
I am so excited to celebrate the 2024-2025 school year with my CPA family.
I would like to tell them, first of all, thank you for taking the time to put on these events for us.
We're here to celebrate teachers and staff tonight. This is your pep rally.
I am so happy to be at Charleston. This is a great district to be a part of.
I hope everybody will leave as excited as we are to kick off this new year with a renewed sense of our appreciation for them and our love for children in this district.
So again, thank you, trustees, and thank you to the staff and the leaders across the district who helped make this such a showcase of student. Maggie wants to see it again. She sure does. I think it's fabulous. So tonight, we're going to focus, as promised, I think at our August committee of the whole, on the end-of-course exams by demographics. Again, the state breaks down its reporting of student achievement by groups of students. And so we want to highlight that for you. We discussed it a bit in our board retreat today, but we want you to see the specifics in regards to our end-of-course exams. So the first slide here on slide three, well, you'll see student groups and how they performed in English, too. Again, you see an increase, as we discussed earlier today, and I think actually at our last board meeting, in all groups of students except for Hispanic students took a decline. We're going to begin looking at this tomorrow at our academic council meeting, and our associates are studying this phenomenon with our principals as we establish goals for the year. So again, increased achievement in three of the four end-of-courses overall. Increase in groups of students except for Hispanics, particularly in regards to English, too. Maggie, so on to slide four. You'll see here, all groups up in Algebra One, Algebra One EOC. Again, I'll give you a second to take that in. Again, you'll see the least significant percentage of growth among Hispanic students. Across the trench, across the district, excuse me. As I shared at our last meeting, you'll see a decline in US history overall in all groups of students. Again, another phenomenon that we're discussing in academic council, and as we work with Dr. Appleheimer and Mr. Comeback and our high school principals. We, we, a question from you is going to probably be, to what do you attribute that? We don't know the root cause. We know that there's a large amount of content that has to be covered in US history, but we're unsure of the decline in last school year. And we're working now with principals and Dr. Appleheimer, who's seated behind me, to determine the root cause and work with principals to ensure that we see progress in the school, the new school year. District EOC scores in biology. Again, here, you'll see scores are up for most groups of students. Our other race and ethnic groups pretty flatlined. There's no significant decline there. But overall, as we shared last month, our achievement in three of the four EOCs is up, and we're particularly excited about the significant growth across the district. Here's what we're doing on slide seven for targeted improvement. First and foremost, the weighted student funding formula will hopefully address some of the declines that we're seeing, particularly among groups of students, pupils in poverty, special ed, and multilingual learners. We're also strategically planning and aligning our resources across the district with, based on what principals are already telling us they need. And we're also making sure that goals are aligned with the strategic plan and with where we see the most opportunity for student growth. District infrastructure, again, how we support families as far as the district's systems level. PLCs are happening across our system, the professional learning communities. Dr. Williams has highlighted that for the board in past committee presentations. We believe that that will foster growth among our students. We've also, as you know, opened a newcomer center. We have opportunities at Stoll and at Pinehurst to support families, particularly those who have, speak English as a second language. The co-teaching model also is showing significant promise when it's done well, and that's something that we're studying. MTSS also is something that we focus on in all of our schools in regards to supporting students, targeted interventions. And the coaching model, again, we discussed earlier today, is something that we believe will support students and will support teachers as they work with students. Just want to make sure you know that in addition to the newcomer center at number five, we also opened the welcome center. It's referenced at Pinehurst. Do you have any questions about this data or any gaps that we may be able to fill for EOCs?
Yeah, thank you. You know, I, obviously, no, I'm very concerned about this United States history and constitution. What changed? Or did anything within the curriculum change or anything we said that?
So, so we, this is an anomaly for us. We don't really understand the root cause of the dips in student achievement here, but we're working now. It's something on our agenda tomorrow for academic council and something with, with, we're working with the high school principals to make sure we understand.
Any other questions?
Do you, I just want to stay in the same vein that Mr. Calhoun's in. Is this something that you could survey the students and ask them? Why, is it a lack of interest or in that grasping the concept?
We believe the, the breadth of content certainly has something to do with the lack of student success in this regard. There is a, a, a very dense course. A huge, and it's, it's hard to get, it's hard to get through all the content typically in the course of the year. So we certainly could survey the students, but we believe getting input from the teachers is probably, which is something our principals are doing, will probably give us more indication of how we need to support the course systemically than anything.
This was a subject that I, I struggled with in school. And it wasn't because I wasn't interested, but I had a hard time keeping the information in line in terms of all the dates that are being thrown at you and it being, it, I can't even say that it was dry because a lot of the times the teachers try to tell it in stories, which I think is great. And considering where we live, I was taken on a lot of, what do you call them? Field trips, that's the word, that's the word.
On-site experiences, we sometimes call them now, yes.
Especially when you get to the college level, that's where I really, because like, I think what, more to your point, where it becomes so dense.
It, it really is, and I'd like to say we have the answers, but we don't right now. But we are doing our best to identify the root cause of the problem or the issue and determine how we might better support it at the central level.
Sure. Any other questions?
Yeah, I have one.
Yeah, I do. I'm, I'm wondering, now that we have the weighted student formula, will we begin to, begin groups of students in those, in those three categories for the weighted student formula?
We will. In fact, we're beginning to look at that in student data reviews in October with our principals. This, right now, this is the way the goals are established. We, I think we discussed this earlier today, too. And so our presentation to the board on the calendar that we've established is for the, the board goals and guardrails as they currently exist. But certainly, we will present that as we examine the weighted student funding formula and its success throughout the year.
I'm also wondering, did you, did, with the US history? Because I'm surprised, because last year, my grandson came home very enthusiastic about the grade he got on the end-of-course exam. And I thought, wow, we're making progress. So, yeah, is there a trend, was this a similar trend across the whole state? Was there a decline in most other districts and kids?
We, we've seen declines, we've, we've seen similar performance in US history across the state. But the decline here is significant in regards to our expectations and what we anticipate, how we anticipated our students would do. But yes, US history is, is challenging across South Carolina. Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Bailey?
My question was for the literacy demographics for the Hispanics. Is it dipping because we have more, more Hispanics children coming in, in the middle of the year, towards the end of the year, or the beginning of the year?
You, you, you see, Mrs. Bailey, again, we talked earlier about increased enrollment in certain schools and the demographics of those students, and it not necessarily being, Mr. Barrowey shared, we don't necessarily see it across feeder pattern, but we've seen it in the high schools. And so it could be, that could be one of the, the factors that have, that have contributed here. Certain, certainly so in, in, in several of the areas, as, as is evident by the data and the declines. Thank you for the question. I'd also, that's all for me, Mr. Kelly, but I'd encourage the board. Mrs. Denny will share publicly, we viewed a video about, from staff, that staff put together from various stakeholders earlier today with thanks to the district around the weighted student funding formula. Hey, increased planning time, which we believe will positively contribute to improve student gains, employee daycare, et cetera. Mrs. Denny will put that out for viewing to the general public after today's session. We're going to put it here, but in the interest of time, did not as well. So that's all we.
Thank you for that. I, I do have one comment myself as well.
Yes, please.
I would encourage the district to look at schedule, amount of, amount of time spent on other topics. I, I went to back-to-school night with my first grader, and, and I saw, well, frankly, I saw a lot of time that was used that didn't have anything to do with academics. And so if what I'm hearing from the staff is that we don't have enough time in the school day to get actual academics done, and yet we're talking about feelings and holding hands in a circle and other things, I think we're misusing our time.
Thank you for that feedback, Mr. Kelly.
Moving on to item five B.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly. Mrs. Roberts is going to overview for us requests from some of our principals for paper and pencil assessment, which has to be approved by our board before it goes to the state.
So thank you, Ms. Higgins. So the Education Accountability Act requires computer-based testing for SE-ready except for students with disabilities as specified in their IEPs or 504 or an individualized language acquisition plan. However, South Carolina allows schools that indicate technology deficits or challenges to be able to request a waiver from the South Carolina Board of Education to administer those SE-ready assessments, paper, pencil. So based on principal input, CCSD has submitted this request for paper pencil assessment administration to the South Carolina Department of Ed annually to ensure that all of our students have access to an environment and a mode conducive to testing. This year, ten of our schools are requesting approval from our Board of Trustees in order to submit this waiver to the South Carolina Department of Education. Are there any questions?
Questions from the trustees?
I'll go first.
Go right ahead, ma'am.
Ms. Roberts, it seems, did this number increase from last year? It didn't sound like it was that many schools that requested the waiver.
I'm happy to report that the number actually decreased. We were at seventeen schools last year, and this year, we're at ten.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Dr. Temple, it looked like you had something to say as well?
Yeah, I was wondering, you, you listed a, a lot of different groups that, students that can have access to paper and pencil. Can parents also request paper and pencil if they think that their child needs that?
No, ma'am, that is not an option, but thank you for asking.
You have something?
Yeah, so you just said we went down from seventeen to ten this year. So are we getting better technology within the schools? Many of these are some of the rural schools that we know need that infrastructure tightened up. I guess we could say particularly thinking about Frierson. So are we getting better technology within the schools so they can have those connectivities within it?
Well, I won't speak for IT specifically unless Mr. Prentice would like to say anything additional. But I can tell you this, when I first came into the district, there were some things that were difficult. We have partnered very closely with our IT department, and it has been a wonderful partnership in support of schools. We have seen leaps and bounds of where we were just simply six or seven years ago.
And a lot of reason for request isn't simply because of technology challenges. It's, you know, equipping new learners with familiarity somewhat, but certainly, we, I have our eye on the technology issues across the district.
Thank you for that, Ms. Higgins. Any?
The schools that are requesting the paper pencil, are they more elementary school? Is there a pattern to it, other than access to the technology?
The schools are all listed on the attachment.
Oh, they are? I'm sorry, I didn't.
We do have more elementary schools than, than we do middle schools requesting this waiver.
So did we make good on the plan from last year? Because I know within the plan from last year, we said basically about the same thing with the IT department helping out. We did make good on that by getting some of those schools knocked off the list.
I am happy to say we definitely did. So we've been working really hard to, to make things better for our schools and to make sure that that support is there. So we're, we're very happy to partner with our IT folks.
Thank you.
Outstanding. That's on page three of the attachment. Would any of the trustees object to consent agenda item on this one?
Nope.
Nope.
No.
Thank you, Ms. Robertson. With that, we'll move item five A to consent and five B.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly. We're going to ask Dr. Williams to review Board Goal Two around Algebra readiness and achievement. I think some of our principals, we put together a small spotlight tonight to talk a little bit about the work we have going. I want to thank Dr. Williams for his leadership, particularly around Board Goal Two.
So, great evening, everyone. Thank you all again for allowing us an opportunity to give you a brief update on our Board Goal, Board Goal Two, which is Algebra readiness and achievement. The percent of all eighth graders achieving a C or higher on that Algebra One end-of-course exam. So we want to, want to reiterate and stress about this particular goal, that whole idea of access. Because while we're really excited about that achievement, we want to make sure that we're increasing that access as well because we know that's something you all wanted us to keep top of mind. So with that being said, Ms. Higgins already mentioned that we have a video by a few of our scholars and our educators. We'd like to ask you to listen for some of the strategies, some of the things that they're putting in place and the success that they've seen in Algebra One based on those strategies. So if you're ready, Maggie, you can show that video.
We've seen outcomes in math rise across the board, six through eight, and that culminates with Algebra One. It's about the preparation. When a student is successful in Algebra One in eighth grade, they're essentially skipping at least one year somewhere in middle school. For us, what that looks like is typically seventh grade, you're taking one and a half years' worth of math to be able to be prepared for a high school credit class in eighth grade. We hit the math foundation part up big time in flex. So we have a flex period, university fourth period, so the whole school is, is doing flex. And three days a week for the last couple of years has been focused on math, using either adaptive digital content, small group pullouts based on map data, and they can really focus on the strands that those students need, not just in algebraic thinking, but across the board. And that starts in sixth grade.
Here at Hocap, eighth graders take Algebra One. And so I teach all Algebra One students here. I get to loop with them. So I have them for seventh grade, so we do two years in one in the seventh grade, and then for eighth grade, assuming they do well the year prior, and they get to take Algebra One for high school credit when they go to high school, so they can go into ninth grade already having a math credit ready. I feel like something I really stress in my classroom, because they're getting older and they're taking a high school course, but they're in middle school. So they still have all those things going on in middle school, and they're not, they're very independent. They want to be independent, but they need a little bit more handholding. So I really stress a lot in my class of the importance of just being an independent learner. I do a lot of peer classwork. I let them work in groups a lot. It's been working. I, I see every year a big change from when they're seventh graders, and they need a lot of handholding, and then by eighth grade, I just see the dramatic change and they start to really care about their learning. And it's not even for me, it's just for them, and I just think that is awesome.
So in Algebra One, Ms. Beer lets us work with partners and groups, which is, I feel like it's a lot more fun because you get to learn ideas from other people and what they, what they think about the math.
Instruction, number one, is always going to be first and foremost. So having strong instructional, core instructional program is absolutely necessary for all of our learners. So our teachers are going to make sure that our students are doing well, that they are going to be supported as they're sufficiently challenged. And in addition to our core instructional program and the assistance our teachers offer during our win period, which a lot of people refer to as flex, we use. which a lot of people refer to as flex, we use Alex, which is adaptive math software, three times a week. And so that's also going to help support the students in making sure we're filling any gaps. And that's for all students, but also those who are accelerated. Because I think it's something to remember that no matter how well a student is doing, they still may have gaps. So we want to shore up those gaps or shore up those areas of opportunity, but also make sure we're accelerating them efficiently.
We started with expressions and equations and I gave them a little project yesterday about connecting the word problem to the graph, to the equation, to the table. And so they did that. And then today, they just got to work, well, they did that by themselves. And then today, they had to work together. We started in the textbook where they were basically doing the same thing. So if they were able to do that, we should be able to work very quickly through unit two.
Win was very useful because it wasn't like directed, you could do what you needed to do. And also LLC, where you could go eat your lunch and also learn with the teachers that you need help with. And they can talk you through the things that you need help with. And for the ELC, I went to LLC a couple of times to go over the things that I didn't understand. And that helped me get a great school in the ELC.
We've experienced some significant gains in Algebra One here at Deer Park over the last year. And it's been pivotal to really diving into the data to seeing what, where we have some pitfalls and trying to really be strategic in how we address those. We've used that opportunity through PLCs, really using that data-driven instruction that we've had tons of PD on within the last year, and it's really helped so far. One of the other things that I've noticed within the last couple of years of being a middle school principal is that in that high school level class, students needed more time. And so what we were managed to do here at Deer Park on top of their flex period, we managed to have all Algebra One students, they are able to get at least 100 minutes of Algebra One every day. And so that allows for a slower pace.
When I stepped foot in Algebra One, I felt like it was going to be really hard, but the things that she helped us with, like the scientific Desmos calculator and the graphic, it helps me open up more and try to visualize more things with math and also highlighting and taking notes, like avid skills. We took notes to know vocabulary words and some more, give a more understanding of like the equation problems.
Some of the things that I think have led to increased student achievement is the integrated technology use of the Desmos calculator and the use of focus note-taking skills for, like avid note-taking skills. So in seventh grade, students really dove into the scientific Desmos calculator in their math class and got real good using that. And in Algebra One for the ELC, they're allowed to choose between either the scientific or the graphing. And so this year, we focus a lot on that graphing calculator so that they can connect the terms that they're learning in class in the focus note-taking with where that would be at on the calculator, how to effectively use that technology of our Desmos calculator. One of the other things that I think might lead to increased student achievement is the avid note-taking skills with focus note-taking. We use a lot of highlighters and colors to bring out important vocabularies or relate the vocabulary word to what it is actually in a math problem. And I think that really homes in using that better vocabulary for students when they take the ELC at the end of the year.
Alrighty, thank you so much. I'm going to have a proud Papa moment, even though I'm only 35. So I'm way too young to be in there, their Papas on that, that screen. But I want to shout out, you know, our instructional leaders. I see Mr. Vella, Daniel Vella from Hot Gap. And I also see Kevin Smith from CE South and Brendan Glaze from Deer Park. So thank you gentlemen so much for, for participating in this video. And they'll be here to answer questions after we're done as well. So one of the things that you heard, or some of the things you heard from the video with this whole, was the whole idea of collaboration, peer-to-peer, you know, teaching with our scholars. You heard PLCs again, you've heard that a number of times. You're just using that data to drive instruction. You also heard our teacher who spoke about the technology, making sure our scholars have the tools they need to be successful. But one of the other things we're focusing on this year as well, we're looking at our instructional framework, which really highlights what good bell-to-bell instruction looks like in every single classroom. It doesn't matter what it is, US History, Algebra One, English, whatever it may be. So what we want to do now is we want to share a few data slides. And before we move on to our next data slide, I want to make it clear that when we show these videos, we'll just ask if you have any questions afterward because Todd and Mike do such a wonderful job. So thank you all so much for this as well. But we want to share a few data slides with you all so we can go to our first data slide. Thank you, Maggie. All right. So here in our first data slide, we have the eighth grade scholars who are completing Algebra One by the end of eighth grade. If you look at 2223, you'll see we have 30.9% of our scholars who are completing that Algebra One by the end of eighth grade. And in 2324, we have 34.9%. Now, one of the things we want to point out is that we see a 4.0 percentage increase from 2223 to 2324. And if you look underneath, you see we captured the amount of scholars, that percentage, those percentages actually represent. But something that's not on the slide, so you can understand just how much progress we're making in this area. In 2223, we had 3,308 eighth grade scholars enrolled in eighth grade in CCSD. And then 2324, we had 3,195. So although we had a decrease in the total amount of scholars enrolled in eighth grade in CCSD, we saw an increase in the amount of eighth grade scholars who were completing Algebra One by the end of eighth grade. So we wanted to highlight that for you. Next slide, please. All right. For our next slide, we have the percentage of all, we went a little bit deeper. CCSD scholars enrolled in eighth grade achieving a C or higher on that Algebra One end of course exam. As you can see, our end goal for 2027 is 60.3%. And based on our spring 2024 progress, we saw 30.9, which is a 7.2 percentage point increase from 2223 to 2324. So again, we're making some great progress in that area. All right. Next data slide, please. After this, for the final data slide, we looked at eighth grade scholars who took Algebra One and scored a C or higher on the ELC by the end of their eighth grade year. And as you can see, our spring progress for 2024 was 88.4%, which is a 1.6 point percentage increase from 2223 to 2324. So I want to explain to you all this slide versus the slide we just got off of. The first, that, that slide we just left, that takes into, takes into consideration our denominator being every single eighth grade scholar. For instance, I told you all, we had that 3,195 scholars. That will be the denominator for the slide we just left. For this slide, it's the amount of scholars who were enrolled in Algebra One. So it would be that 1,000, I think it was 1,195 scholars that we had enrolled in Algebra One who got a C or higher. Alrighty? So again, we're still making progress, not as significant in that area, but we're making progress. So at this point, that's all we have to share as relates to the data and our presentation on Board Goal Number Two. And we're going to open it up for questions for you all.
Questions from trustees?
I just had a statement that I heard him say, you guys gave them more time to get 100 hours per day for Algebra One. And that, that way they don't seem as rushed during the, during the day during those classes. Okay.
And so, so that would be specific school by school. But one of the things we have encouraged, and I've heard, you've heard me all speak about this before, is that whole idea about that flex period. And I know that we heard the teacher from CE Williams South, I mean, from Hot Gap, mentioned that they have it fourth period during the day. And so that's just a, a period of time where we look at all of our kiddos. It doesn't matter where you are. If you're, you know, showing some gaps, if you're high performing, how can we still take you to the next level? So a lot of them are really using that innovative scheduling. And that's probably something I should have pulled out after the video because you heard that as well, as to how we can better serve all of our kids and make sure we're taking them from here to here. So it's school by school, but they all have been encouraged, you know, Ms. Bailey, to look at their schedules and figure out how can we find more time to accelerate our scholars?
Thank you.
I'm going to ask a question. I know we asked, I believe we asked last year, but when do we get to the point where we start requiring all the students to go into Algebra One within middle school?
Well, first and foremost, I think an important fact is that the standards are, are going to change here shortly and, and also the arrangement of those courses. And I think we've shared some information about that from Ms. Simmons's department. So we're waiting to really see what that's going to look like. We've gotten some information from the State Department. So it may be that, that, that course that, that they're going to get a high school credit in eighth grade, it turns into something different. We've heard like a combination of a geometry-type statistics class. So we're really waiting for the dust to settle on that just a bit before we make any decisions on, okay, what will that course be? If that makes any sense to you. But we do understand that Algebra One is a gateway course and we want to just make sure our kids have the skills. So with that being said, a lot of things that we're doing, just, just focus on like using that data to drive instruction, that OGAAP training that you all have heard a lot about, which is, they're just good strategies that we, we can teach our teachers to utilize in a classroom to really give kids that, 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 that whole idea, that mindset of conceptual thinking. So we're still going to focus on the skills regardless, because those things are critical for any math that kids are going to take.
I think it's important to know, I echo everything that Dr. Williams said and appreciate his leadership in this regard so much. I think it's important for the public and the board to understand, however, that students, as I think one of the teachers and/or Mr. Vella referenced in his comments on the spotlight tonight, is that kids do skip a significant portion of eighth grade standards to enter into Algebra One or a modified geometry course, whichever the trajectory is for the state to change the, the sequencing. So there are kids that will still probably need, you know, those eighth grade standards. And so do we fully anticipate and complete transparency that every student will take Algebra One and/or geometry, again, whichever course is, is in the sequencing from the state? Probably not. But our goal is to make sure that we are increasing and encouraging students and at elementary grade levels and early middle school grade levels, ensure kids are ready if they want to. And kids that look differently and that wouldn't always have access and opportunity to the courses and make sure that we as a system provide those opportunities across our district. I hope that makes sense.
She said that a lot more eloquently.
Not, not the case, Dr. Williams.
OGAAP and different things. We just want to make sure, sure kids have the skills, you know? And so, so we can think about, you know, that, that, that bar being kids being enrolled in Algebra One, being enrolled in geometry. But if kids have the skills and they can leave our system college and career ready, that's our ultimate goal. So.
Absolutely. One last question. Mr. Smith, I see you on there. Can you talk about how your strategy has had to work with CE Williams North to make sure when you get, when they come over to?
Show it on the acronyms, Mr. Smith.
So I, I heard a little bit of that. It sounds like you cut out. First of all, thank you all for having us. And so one of the things, if I understood you correctly, you're asking how does the work with the vertical articulation from North Campus, sixth grade, come work with in conjunction with seventh and eighth? Am I correct?
Yes.
So, so one thing I can tell you, one thing to note is when we merged, there are a lot of, of the different things that we've been doing that we have continued to do, we're just doing them differently on, you know, doing them the same things on two different campuses. But the second thing is we hold vertical articulation meetings with North Campus each year so that we can understand which students are prepared to move on to the next steps in so many different ways, including of course, in math courses. We look at that, make sure our students are appropriately placed. We actually have several, several seventh grade students who are taking Algebra One because they're ready. And so they're ready to take geometry in eighth grade. And so we have the student that you saw in the, in the video, he's actually took, he took Algebra One in seventh grade. He's in geometry this year. And so what we do is of course, make sure that our students are prepared by having those conversations, those vertical articulation conversations amongst the educators. And we also using the CCSD rubric to make sure we're also preparing, putting students in classes that they were prepared for. But even more than that, the whole idea of making sure students have extra time, extra support, those things are germane to both of our campuses. And so we want to make sure that we are providing those students with that support, that time. And the teachers are having PLCs in their planning and that we make sure that the, the transition between campuses is as seamless as possible.
Thank you. That was the last question, I promise. Do the student also get that geometry credit going into high school as well?
Any other trustees?
I answered for him. Kevin.
All right. Well, thank you all for your time and thank you for the presentation, sir.
Thank you all.
And moving on to item six, Mr. Calhoun for.
We have actually three action items that we'll be looking at at the board meeting coming up. The first action item will be the General Obligation Bomb Resolution that moved through auto finance as well as the second one being capital programs phase five sales tax budget reallocation. Lastly, we will have an executive session item when we get to the board regarding District Ten contractual matter, constituent District Ten contractual matter. You will, I believe we have the attachment on here as well. So yes, we will have all of those at the board meeting. And Mr. Prentice, do you want to run through any of that information items real quick?
Only thing I'd point your attention to, this was the first month that we had the WSF monthly financial report included. So if you look at the July monthly financial report, there's a second attachment in there with a dashboard report for WSF. So appreciate any feedback or thoughts that you might have on that as it goes through its next month cycle.
Is it live on the website yet?
Not yet. We're still working on final development on it.
That's correct. Any questions from trustees?
Well, the only feedback I have is on the circles.
A little small.
Just like, just give me the, just give me the numbers.
You scroll down, the numbers are there.
I know they're there, but those graphs don't really do much for me.
And I appreciate that comment. The, as Mr. Calhoun mentioned, it is actually intended to be a more interactive dashboard that we can put on the website where you can click and hover over those areas to see the, the underlying numbers. So we just exported it as a PDF to get comments and I'll see if we can do any labels on the PDF for future as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you both. All right. Ms. Wotley, item seven A.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly. We will, let me get this opened real quick. As the superintendent referenced earlier, let me not try to do two things at once. We went over during our board retreat today, the new law that's just been signed in June, or July, rather, is it 47-130?
Forty-three.
Forty-three dash 170, transposed to there. So these policies are in alignment with the, with the new law that's been proposed. Every trustee should have received in your email, the, the policies as being proposed. Some of them are new, some of them are adding to, some of them are striking previous language and adding new language. I, I will turn it over to Dr. Clamp, if you would like to brief the public on the proposed changes.
Yes, ma'am. Good afternoon, board. Thank you so much for this opportunity to bring to you a first reading and a, a group of policies that are working to support the alignment of our practices and our procedures with Regulation 43170, which is the reconsideration installation of instructional materials. And before we begin that, just wanted to remind you as we did inside of the board retreat this afternoon that the expectation is that we as a system and you as a board work in concert together to choose and retain quality instructional materials. And that that decision be made with two prongs, with two advisements. Number one is the material age and developmentally appropriate. And number two is the material aligned with South Carolina standards and the graduate profile that we expect for students as they exit our system. So in doing so, with that alignment, we'll get an opportunity both as a system and then you potentially as a board to consider concern about those materials. Now, you will still sit in the opportunity that you currently do in the final approval of any materials that are selected. For example, math materials for this upcoming school year, 2526. We in the spring will have a chance to consider those materials as recommended by the State Department. A member of our team, I want to thank Ms. Simmons and the instructional team and Learning Services team who will bring forward recommendations for that. That practice will remain in alignment. This new practice that has been attached to Regulation 43170 allows for the board to consider a concern after a good faith effort at the school and system level has rendered a decision that potentially the complainant has not agreed with. So I would like to, here, here's a diagram that we've designed to hopefully help you and others understand what our focus is and what we're pointing towards, which is that selection and retention of quality instructional materials and what we should use to make those decisions and then who gets involved. Obviously, you're at the core of those decisions and we appreciate that and believe your leadership in that, in that, in that, in that vein. Well, the system provides the foundation for the selection of those materials, both through our superintendent and our Learning Services team. So what I'd like to do, if I can, is just walk you through these just briefly and answer any questions you might have. Obviously, this is just our first reading, so we will undergo opportunities for revision. We appreciate those pieces of advice. I'll start with policy IJ. Policy IJ is a policy that we currently possess in Charleston County School District. This one took on a pretty significant revision as we ensure that we include the criteria for the materials that we're selecting and choosing with our instructional resources. And it provides language for parents associated to surveys. So that particular policy already exists. We've updated the language there to include language consistent with Regulation 43170. The next policy, IJK, is supplementary materials selection and adoption. You can see this one only took on a brief revision, including the word software associated to computer programs that can be chosen for supplementary materials. And then at the conclusion of this policy, you can see that we've added some red language to be, become in alignment with Regulation 43170 as well. IJKAA is a current policy that we have for the reconsideration of materials. Inside of this policy, only one brief revision to indicate that the superintendent and his or her destiny will direct concerns associated to instructional materials to follow this policy. And if the school-based good faith effort is not in alignment with the expectation that a parent or could consider Policy KEC, which is a new policy that we are recommending for creation. There's an administrative rule that we've provided with Policy IJKAA for your information. That administrative rule has inside of it specific language associated to both the transparency of the materials that we collect and use in our system as well as the practices that will take place in that good faith effort. The new policy that we recommend for the board's consideration for creation is Policy K, which is concerns and complaints about instructional resources. This inside of this diagram would be the procedure that the board would consider if they approve this policy and that they would follow if they are considering a formal complaint, a complaint that would come after the school-based good faith effort. And so inside of KEC also exists a, and you can see it's all red because it's brand new. Inside of Policy KEC is also an administrative rule, which really outlines the steps that both a parent would follow if they are to proceed in that manner, as well as the steps that the board would take in recognizing that complainant and their concern. So I'll pause there now for those policy first reading considerations to see if you have any questions or anything I can further clarify.
All right, I will open it up to Dr. Temple first. Sorry, sorry, Dr. Temple.
Before we start debate, we should have a pending motion on the floor to be debated.
Would you like to go ahead and make a motion?
I, no, thank you. Just procedurally speaking.
Okay, well, I I would assume somebody needs to make a motion. So I'm offering it to you.
No, thanks. But someone does need to make a motion before we debate it.
Mr. Grabowski.
Well, theoretically, he's correct. We, and now the question comes down whether we can do this as a group. And I've looked to the parliamentarian on this, or we have to do each individual one that open up that policy for debate since it is only the first reading. What I would like to propose is, and I'd like to make a motion that we take all the policies as a group, since this is the first reading and that we would open it up for debate on any given policy as identified.
A second that.
Okay, do we need to vote on that before we discuss?
If there's consensus.
There's consensus. Okay, Dr. Temple.
If there is any.
Well.
And I think Dr. Temple, in line with the motion that we just, if you're talking about a specific policy that you trust that policy that way when it comes back up.
Yeah, I have a lot of, I have a lot of questions about about the policies. I I think one of the things I was concerned about was the the cataloging of all the materials that we're talking about. And I have real concerns about the staffing that is involved with the time that it's going to take for all this cataloging, the keeping it up to date on the website. So I I'm seeing that this has budgetary implications. And I was wondering if there's been any consideration to this the staffing that's going to need be needed to put these policies in place as well as a budget.
Yes. Dr. Clamp, does that apply to all? Because I think that's specific to policy, one of the policies.
KEC is one of them.
Right.
Yes.
And IJKAA is also another one.
Yes, sir. Yes, ma'am. The expectation for the catalog is consistent with the regulation that we both have available upon reasonable request, a catalog of the instructional materials that both we have in our schools as well as in our classrooms. So at the beginning of this school year, we did two things. Number one, we began to communicate to our principals, the expectations that the resources that are being used are made available upon reasonable request amongst our classrooms. And that our classroom teachers had access to do two things. They had access to use a software package called BeanStack that allows for this digital collection of the resources very quickly, as well as ensuring that they've reviewed the materials that they're using and choosing those appropriate materials in alignment with their standards and alignment with the curriculum that they're presenting. So two things actually happened. Teachers had accessibility accessibility to technology to help make that process more efficient. And they also had a chance to work with other colleagues to ensure that they chose the right materials and they had the right ones available in their classroom. Once that initial inventory has now been collected each year annually, if a piece is added or deleted for any reason, for example, if they changed a grade level or if the content or standards changed, then that process for subsequent years wouldn't be as demanding as the first year upfront. Our library media specialists, our library teachers, they do this annually. So the access point to the digital resources and Destiny, for example, that has the up-to-date catalog for all of our libraries already, and they annually make decisions as new pieces are published and the librarians decide to add a piece to their collection or remove a piece to their collection. They're doing that already. So we have anticipated this and we began this process already this summer in communication. Ms. Simmons, did you want to touch any other points on that?
That's precisely correct. And the BeanStack platform that Dr. Clamp refers to is an instrument, a platform that's already in the system, already accounted for, already paid for. So it's not an additional cost associated.
It's important too for the the public, the viewing public to know and understand that this this procedure is aligned with the regulation. This isn't something that CCSD has opted to do or CCSD has said, oh, all of a sudden, as a former English teacher, you know, I had a vast library of hundreds of books. But we've tried, Ms. Simmons, I want to thank her and Dr. Clamp and our principals for working thoughtfully with our teachers, although I'm certain it was no easy task. We're proud of where our teachers are and the resources that they've been given to make this available to parents upon request.
The other concern I had was that, you know, so much new, we're in the information age and so much new materials come about that I don't want to see that we have policy that's going to restrict teachers from choosing something because it's new, newly out there, newly discovered, because they haven't cataloged their the material. So see, there's awkwardness, potential awkwardness for this unless they choose it in this school year and then they report it at the end of the year.
Truth be told, Dr. Temple, the threshold that we really want teachers to be concerned about is the triangle that talks about is the content, is the textbook, is the novel appropriate? Is it developmentally appropriate? Does it connect to state standards? And so once the process, as Dr. Clamp alluded to, gets underway in earnest, as it has at the top of this school year, it will be a matter of updating regularly. Maybe a little bit of a pain point initially, but the bottom line upfront is we have the infrastructure for teachers to catalog well. And and it's an opportunity. We see it as an opportunity for them to to weed, to flesh out and to make sure the best, the most appropriate, high-quality and information and materials are in front of our scholars.
Ms. Simmons, if I may, I believe what you're saying is outlined in Policy IJ. Correct?
Yes, ma'am.
So that that's the cataloging brings everything into alignment with IJ. And then it goes into the IJKAA, KEC, et cetera, et cetera.
Yes, ma'am.
If need be.
Yeah, well, I'm just I'm just making a comment that if something's new out there, you know, I don't want our teachers to feel like they can't use something and or they definitely understand.
As long as.
Excuse me.
Sorry.
How they need to record it because we we don't want them to be intimidated or challenged on.
Yes, ma'am. That 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 point we we is noted, but I, again, that's why I'm responding to you. Your concern about that with, as long as things are in alignment with IJ, there shouldn't be any other issue. Was anything else?
No, go ahead. Maybe let me look through mine. I had a lot of notes.
Is there anyone else? Mr. Calhoun?
Yes, I just want to reiterate what the superintendent just said. This is aligning with the state. We have to do it as much as I don't want to, but we have to.
We will do our, thank you for that, Mr. Calhoun. We will do our due diligence at the central level and working with principals and families to ensure we we hear families' concerns and that we respond in a way that that honors them and their children. But that, again, we deal with issues and so that it doesn't have to come to the board. That that will be our goal.
Right. And as long as the staff and everybody on your team is putting in that good faith effort, so we won't have to see coming up every single board meeting because that's, I mean, that's that slippery slope I can see that's going to end up happening, you know? Things keep coming up to us and next thing you know, we here till two o'clock in the morning, can't get out the gate anymore, you know?
Sure, sure.
Yeah, I just want to reiterate this is coming from Columbia.
Miss.
Respond to.
Ms. Roberson, one moment, please. Mr. Grabowski, grab the mic.
What Mr. Calhoun brought up, I think it was during this afternoon when this, all of these policies were discussed, you know, in depth and in detail. I think it was very clear that, you know, the staff has spent an enormous amount of time in putting in the procedural processes to protect, you know, the parents' rights and also to protect the teachers. I mean, it was just very clear that, you know, they are there. So policies through, you will see that these, you know, the processes, protections are there. So my hat's off to you.
Well, and another thing that was brought out during the board retreat also is that the the district staff began this process last year. So things are well underway and hopefully there there won't be any real issues. Ms. Roberson?
Well, actually, Mr. Grabowski said what I was going to say. I just wanted to thank Ms. Huggins and her staff, Dr. Clamp, Ms. Simmons. I read everything and this is a lot. And you did a really good job in putting this together. So thank you for your due diligence and we'll just go from there. It's it's a regulation and we have no choice. So thank you for doing your due diligence.
Thank you for that, Ms. Roberson.
Good timing.
Perfect timing. Did you seconded a motion that Mr. Grabowski made? We'll call it for a vote and bring it, call for the question. How would you like it worded?
The the motion was to, since this was a first reading, that Policy IJ, these are all draft, Policy IJK, Policy KE, Policy KEC, Policy IKAA dash R, Policy IKAA, and Policy KEC dash R would be brought forward to the board for a second reading pending any amendment said would have been.
It'll be brought to the board for the first reading.
For the first reading, correct, for the first reading. Sorry.
Ms. Trudy, did he get IJ and also Form KEC dash E? So I'll I'll read them all for you real quick. We've got IJ, we've got IJK, KE, KEC, IJKAA dash R, IJKAA, KEC dash R, and then KEC dash E.
That's.
That's correct.
That that that's correct. The admin procedural things typically I'll go to the board for information. We wanted to be very transparent, however, about the admin rules associated with these things. And so it would be policies related to Regulation forty-three one seventy, Ms. Ms. Bowles.
We appreciate the transparency.
You're welcome.
I I I would comment that the the complaint forms were very thorough.
Thank you. Again, I really want to applaud Dr. Clamp and Ms. Simmons, their teams for the work on this.
And Dr. Clamp and I will sit down and and Ms. Simmons, please join us if you would like. Just a couple of clarification questions for myself and grammatical stuffs.
That's that's perfect. We would appreciate that. And Mrs. Hampton and Mr. Johnson have agreed to just bare file related procedures to ensure where everything's represented accurately.
Thank you.
We do apologize for the lag. Mr. Mr. Prentice and his team are working to 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 upgrade our our systems to the extent they can be upgraded.
Not to compare us to Berkeley County. I think I've done this before, but they have instantaneous.
I know we we talked to them. We did.
And it passes with one abstention. And then, okay, so moving on to items seven B. Before I go into why we're seeing this back on the many of the whole agenda, I first would like to thank Dr. Melissa Melonic, Rachel Garrett from D Norton and Megan Wallace from MUSC Children's Advocacy for meeting with a host of district staff and myself and discussing Gavin's Law and the language that was in it. So the reason why we decided to bring this back, and I will certainly turn this back over to either Dr. Clamp or General Counsel if he was like to weigh in, but we we were discussing language in that about coercion, which will, before somebody before this came comes up to the district or the board, they've already violated a law which coercion meets the elements as a part of the the violation of the law. So and and so I wanted some experts to weigh in on this, and this is what they do for their profession with D Norton and the Child Advocacy Center with MUSC, with Megan Wallace and these experts. So Dr. Clamp, would you like to give the board a little brief of that that sit-down meeting that we had and why Gavin's Law is coming back to the committee of the whole?
Yes, ma'am. And thank you for assisting us and getting that collaborative session established so that we could meet with that experts to ensure that our language was miserable with both what the law indicates and 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 what we should be doing as a system. And there was an initial wonder about the use of the word coercion in our policy. And through their support and through their dialogue, we learned that it is it is anticipated that that type of language be connected to the curriculum, that it doesn't necessarily need to be tied to the policy because it can be communicated through the curriculum. So Gavin's Law is is very definitive in its language and both what it represents and the content that it represents. So they helped us, WordSmith, that that language. We thought it should be included and we now understand and know that it's best served inside of the curriculum and not inside of the policy language.
And the curriculum that meets Aaron's Law.
Yes, ma'am. The curriculum that meets. Aaron's Law and Gavin's Law can be taught in coordination with one another. And I say coordination because they're obviously two different topics, but two similar topics in coordination with our Comprehensive Health and Education Act. So when we're communicating that and and we have that curriculum developed, I want to thank Ms. Simmons and her team and Learning Services, Dr. Jerome Davis and his team who are developing that and providing that available for our students. So the 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 draft language that you see today reverts back, we did not include the word coercion. We did include the language associated to the legal side of this as the communication with the. to the legal side of this as the communication with the School Boards Association advised us that because this policy was created in collaboration with the Attorney General's Office, law enforcement and school districts, it's expected that type of collaboration be communicated inside of the policy. And so absent of including that would suggest that the collaboration didn't happen. So we included that back and we have it now ready for your consideration for final review.
One more note on that is these, this panel, I guess I can use this word in collaboration with CCSD. They felt that the inclusion of the language in Gavin's Law for coercion would actually muddy down the policy and the intended use of it as coercion is already an element of the crime. And as an element of that crime, they are mandated because there were some other language in that that said that, that, the, if somebody is found in violation of this policy, that they may be turned over to law enforcement. But thankfully for these experts, they went ahead and pointed out that, that law, by law, they are mandated to be turned over to law enforcement. So you should see that change as well reflected in in, in the, in this policy. Gavin's Law?
Yeah, I know, in Gavin's Law, but you're talking about.
I, I don't, I, I.
It's paragraph sixteen.
From the, the. I'm sorry, go ahead, Mr.
Paragraph sixteen.
Thank you.
Item sixteen?
Yeah, paragraph number sixteen, one six.
Okay, so that's what it is in yellow. That's what, okay. Thank you.
And with that, would someone like to make a motion? Move.
Okay.
Okay. Moved by Dr. Temple, seconded by Mr. Calhoun. I just, again, I want to appreciate everyone that took extra time out of your day and especially these experts who decided to take time out of their schedules to meet with us and Dr. Melonic for the referral to these two experts for making sure we all did our due diligence and getting this policy right because of the weight of it.
While we wait to vote, Dr. Clamp, thank you for your explanation to the public.
Yes, ma'am.
Mrs. Roberson, your, your vote for some reason isn't coming in reject to voice vote?
Did it come through?
Yes, ma'am.
All right, and it passes unanimously. Mr. Kelly, I turn it back over to you.
Thank you kindly. All right, items for consent are going to be the paper pencil waiver, item five A, as well as policy seven B. Upcoming meetings, we have October, the first Roddick and Finance, October, the second is our scheduled, rescheduled Board of Trustees meeting, fourteenth is the Committee of the Whole, and then Board of Trustees for the twenty-eighth. And with that, ladies and gentlemen, we've made it. Do I hear a motion?
I so move to adjourn.